Good evening.
So, thank you Chancellor Claire and Board of Trustees and District College Presidents. And Kate Brown. So, thank you so much for having allowed me a few minutes to speak on behalf of class. Cutting classes early in the semester or before the semester has even started. I wanted to read a letter penned by a colleague who is busy working tonight. This is a statement that comes from an adjunct who's taught at Skyline College for over fifteen years, a much valued colleague of mine. So she writes, please understand that a canceled class represents unpaid labor that is difficult to quantify. It isn't only the loss of income for the semester during which the course is meant to run, which of course is difficult for an adjunct to absorb and extremely difficult to replace. But it is also the fact that because adjuncts get their teaching assignments so far in advance. And because book orders are due shortly after, the course has to be designed early in the semester when prior to when it was supposed to run. That means that I am working on my fall courses while also teaching summer school. And to meet the book order requirement, I really had to begin working on it in the spring of the quarter before. Because I am committed to using open resources, not only did I create a seventeen week class with readings, study guides, reflective assignments. Essays, book groups, and a creative assignment, as well as multiple reflective assignments, I also created the textbook. Finding open resources and coordinating with our own open resource team to make sure that every link was legal to use. And and working as it should. I also recorded several videos on the topics and archived them to add to the class. The number of hours this amounts to is difficult to count exactly, but I would estimate fifty to a hundred hours. So again, not only am I losing the income for the fall semester, but I have been, I have effectively created a course with an open resource list. And my own custom textbook on the faith that the class would run. And and. And now that labor is unappreciated, uncompensated, and wasted irretrievably. Aside from this, I want to touch on the aspect of canceling this course that represents a unique disservice to students. This class is one of the few literature courses that specifically speaks to people of color. And their experience in the United States as the title is Literature Three Seventy, Literature of the Latino in the United States. It couldn't be more topical, it couldn't be more important, and is in alliance with our effort to make our courses more specifically culturally responsive. And representative of our multicultural population. Given that the summer semester is not even over, it seems a shame on many levels to cancel this class so early. Thank you for listening. And I think she speaks to many faculty who are wondering why the classes are being canceled. When there are six weeks still left of summer. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Mr. President, your next speaker is David Lau.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Lau. I'm an English professor at the College of San Mateo. It's great to see so many. People I know, including Chancellor Claire on this call. And I know everyone is working so hard to make all of this reopening happen. I'm gonna read from. A. Statement by an adjunct. At CSM, and her name is Margaret. Lozne, and she teaches in the Geography Department. So I'm getting a lot of texts, everyone. So this is her statement. And I'm gonna read from that, and then I'll offer one final comment. I appreciate the opportunity to express my opinion concerning canceling low enrollment online classes. Canceling classes, both online and face to face, of less than twenty students is not in the best interest of our students at SMCCD. Canceling classes may be disruptive to many of our students. As they try to plan their academic program within their life, work, childcare schedules. I have consistently taught online classes for more than six years because. Of this experience, I have come to understand how important online classes are for a large segment of our student population. Students in my asynchronous online classes have diverse reasons why online classes meet their academic goals. For example, in our online discussions, they mentioned how it allows them to work full time. Take care of small children in their home, or be out of the region. They do not have to worry about long transportation commutes and issues, including transportation costs. Canceling online classes impacts our most vulnerable students. Who must work to support their families. And at the same time, finance their education. I would question the assumption that canceling online classes will increase student enrollment. My concern is that it may contribute to enrollment decline as students seek courses elsewhere. I support diversity and fluidity of instructional access for our students. With a gradual increase in on-campus courses as the COVID situation improves. I love teaching at SMCCD as an adjunct. It is my passion and my full-time profession. I can empathize with my students. Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit. I would suggest permanent changes, dropping the enrollment level to ten students instead of canceling classes. I would recommend adding and offering more hybrid courses. While this may not be the most fiscally. Efficient. Solution based on statistical reports and number crunching. It addresses the important human factor and needs of our students, faculty, and staff. And I would just like to add that as the chapter chair of CSM, every day I hear over email from people who are concerned about their courses being cut. So this statement does reflect not only the views of adjuncts, but also full timers. Great to see everybody and have a good meeting.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Evan Kaiser.
Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, colleagues. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. First, I'd like to thank the members of the negotiating teams for agreeing to the provision that classes of ten or more students. Will not be canceled. Tonight, I represent the ESL Department at College of San Mateo in highlighting how this policy supports resident learners of English. So I'm an ESL, English as a Second Language instructor at CSM. And a significant portion of our students are adults, some of whom are degree seeking, some of whom are not. Most of whom are looking to build language proficiency at the low intermediate or intermediate level. Over the past few years, we have faced ongoing cancellations of these lowest levels, even with low single-digit enrollments such as thirteen, fourteen, fifteen students. Without consistent offerings at this level, students lose interest in attending CSM. Sometimes moving to other colleges or sometimes not pursuing ESL studies at all. Now, currently, the marketing folks have launched a broad recruitment campaign. So on one. In one sense, it's important that we preserve the sections for the recruited students to enroll. But more importantly than all of that, we know that these ESL courses are gateways to other more advanced courses, which boosts students' earning potential, opportunity, and so on. And we know that simply being in a college class is transformative for students' lives, their relationships with their children, family, community. Their sense of agency and sense of belonging. I always think about the students making the leap from the adult schools to community college. You know, it finally feels challenging. It finally feels rigorous. It finally feels motivating to be at college, especially for students who are highly educated professionals in their countries of origin. This is the environment that they need. So as I close, I thank you again for agreeing to preserve courses this semester with enrollments of ten. Or more, because our Level Two and Level Three ESL courses comprise a key. And often overlooked piece of the equity commitments of our campus. And even outside the context of a COVID emergency, I would urge you to please maintain the provision that low single-digit enrollments. Will not trigger cancellations for classes that serve resident English learners. Thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Mary Ann Kletzky.
Yes.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So my name is Mary Ann Kletzky, and I'm Executive Secretary of AFT Fourteen Ninety Three. Which is the union that represents faculty at our three colleges. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of that union. So as you've heard, in the MOU for Fall Twenty Twenty One, that our union recently negotiated with the district. We were very happy to agree on the provision that for Fall Semester, course sections that achieve an enrollment of at least ten students. Will not be canceled for low enrollment. This provision in our eyes helps to ensure that the district is truly able to provide something for everyone, to use Chancellor Claire's words. And offer both students who prefer to take classes in person and those who want to continue taking classes online, options that work for them. However, we were dismayed to hear last week that deans have already begun canceling Fall Online Courses that currently have fewer than ten students. Faculty know that many students do not register for courses until just before the semester starts. By canceling classes now before they have time to fill, the district is depriving those students who are registered. Of the chance to take a course that they know works for their schedule and allows them to achieve their educational goals on the timeline they planned. We have heard that the district plans to open new in-person sections and that students whose online courses are canceled can register instead for those in-person courses. And yet we have also heard from so many students that when they were told back in February that Fall Twenty Twenty One would be online. They made their plans for work, childcare, and family responsibilities based on the knowledge that they would be taking classes remotely. Many of these students cannot suddenly pivot and rearrange their lives to take courses in person. By canceling the online classes they are depending on, the district risks depriving these students of the opportunity to complete their degree requirements on time. And some students may get derailed by schedule changes and stop taking classes altogether. Of course, class cancellations don't only impact students, they also impact our faculty, particularly adjunct faculty, who often work across multiple institutions to make enough money to live on. In the best case scenario, an adjunct may have an online course canceled and be offered an in-person course instead. But the course may meet at a time that they're scheduled to teach at another institution. Even if the in-person course is offered at the exact same time they'd planned to teach a synchronous online course, driving times between institutions may make it impossible for them to accept. As a result, adjuncts whose online courses are canceled stand to lose significant income, even if they are later offered in-person courses. Adjuncts have made a commitment to this district when in many cases they could have accepted a teaching offer elsewhere. And many adjuncts have made that commitment based on the announcement that their fall courses would be online. Students have made plans based on the same announcement. We know that many faculty and students are excited to return to campus this fall. And we support any effort to boost our district's enrollments. What we are asking is that as the district moves forward with its plans to add in-person sections, it also stays true to its promise of offering something for everyone. By giving online sections reasonable time to fill. And we are asking you, the board, for your support to ensure that our district's administration does the right thing. Deans must be instructed to wait to cancel Fall Online Courses that currently have fewer than ten students. Classes must be given sufficient time to fill so that our students' educational plans are not derailed. And adjunct instructors do not needlessly lose an essential source of income. Faculty and students are depending on these sections. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Shannon H.
All right.
Hey, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I am a student at Skyline College. My name is Shannon Hong. I'm STEM student, Environmental Engineering major, and this is my second year here. I wanted to come on and talk on behalf of students because I understand that a lot of us are busy and I still want our voices to be heard. I also want to begin this by saying that I have came to a couple of the board meetings, and I remember one of the board meetings. One of the district members had mentioned saying that, or comparing our reopening to Disneyland. And I want to just say that there are parts of that that people will take up a problem with just because. When going to school, we are talking about our livelihood and our future. We are not coming to school just to have fun. And this disregards a lot of the needs of all of our students. So in the future, I would probably refrain from saying things like that. COVID nineteen for me has caused many issues, especially in the beginning, because we were all in a state of emergency. And to subject students to the same situation again, just because we did it before, is something that I have an issue with as well. I had to drop a class in the beginning of COVID nineteen, and it was a math class, which was a part of an entire sequence. Because of this, this has delayed parts of my graduation. If you are to drop classes that also are a part of a sequence, it will also delay other people's graduation. The online setting has also caused many issues for most students, but over time, especially because we've adjusted for the last year and a half. We have been able to adjust to it in many ways, and now we are able to use it in our advantage. For me, this means that I am able to do four classes, all of which are at different colleges. And I can still actually attend all of them, but this is not possible if we actually went back to class. I have a class at CSM, and I also have a class at Skyline. I can't drive from Skyline to CSM in two minutes. It's just not possible. And I know that a lot of other students are in the same exact position. These are things that I feel like the board has not taken into consideration yet. With this, I know that you aren't choosing not to answer questions right now, but I'd like to leave you with these questions. Do you know which classes are being dropped? Do you know if they are prerequisites for other classes, or do you know someone who actually knows this information? If so, have you been able to communicate with them properly to actually decide which of these classes should be dropped? If the only criteria is that if it's less than ten people, I think that you should also do some reconsideration. I yield my time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Cola Wamba.
All right. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Hello, everyone. It's very good to be here. I'm Cola Wamba, and I teach physics at Skyline, and I'm also a. Faculty representative to the Executive Committee for our union. Chapter at Skyline. I'm going to be reading a statement. From one. Let's see, from one Rosie Bell in the Skyline College History Department. And I quote. The district is trying to catch something that is elusive at present. They want to increase our enrollment numbers rather than take a painful look at the results of a pandemic. The enrollments are down all over. Students have moved away with their families who are seeking employment. Others may see this as an opportunity to find a job and take an off-year from school. Others are just plain scared and fearful of getting sick. Those are just a few problems that I see. I was asked today if I wanted to turn my two low-enrolled classes from online to face-to-face. One has seven, the other two students. I said, no. There are no other sections being offered. One is History One Oh Six, which fills up, and the other is History One Oh One, which has struggled in the past. It's too early to cancel any class, in my humble opinion. Yet, in their zeal to jack up the numbers, they are grasping for straws. And that is, that concludes the statement. From. From. Rosie Bell. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Nicholas Maron.
How are we doing out there?
Mr. President, I promoted him, and he came on, but I guess he jumped off again.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Vice Chancellor Bailey.
Mr. President, your next speaker then is Eric Brenner.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Hello. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Rika Yanamura Fabian.
Recording in progress.
Hello, board members. Can you hear me? Hi, welcome to the board, and it's really good to see Dr. Teila Mendoza and also Dr. Perez to the board of new members. So my name is Rika Yanamura Fabian. I teach Sociology and Social Justice Studies. And also I am a chapter co-chair of the Skyline AFT. And tonight I am speaking on behalf of Attila Elteto tonight, our fellow colleague in Physics-Astonomy Department in Canada College regarding class cancellation. Since he could not make it today to the meeting, I am speaking on behalf of him because he wanted to share his thought regarding this matter. He writes, it was not until late June when we were informed about the BOT decisions regarding the emphasis on return to campus in August. What is noteworthy here is that this is a shorter timeline to adapt to than the one we faced during the onset of the pandemic crisis to begin with. But the biggest hurdle is that by the time we were told we would start returning to campus in mass. A lot of our students have already registered and made plans. While faculty have been tested and proven adaptable, such changes are hugely devastating to students who don't have the buffer backup plans. That short, such short-term changes demand as we saw last spring. The increased number of low enrollment classes should be treated as a symptom to be mended, not a problem to be cut out. Many students whose classes you cut will not return to sign up for another section. Others who are planning to register for classes only by the end of July will never get the chance to get into this section, and again, we will lose them. Please put yourself in the shoes of the students who otherwise would have wanted to attend our classes. We don't want to finish the crisis by losing even more students. The district has asked a lot from faculty and the students to adapt to and ride out the chaos the pandemic created. The district should in turn set an example by being adaptable and writing out the effects of the chaos for one more year. Our students certainly have already done their share. This is a statement by Attila Elteto Physics Department faculty at Canada College, and as a chapter co-chair, I'm receiving this kind of message, a lot of them, from our faculty members. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for sharing.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Cassidy Corbin.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cassidy Corbin, and I'm currently a Communication major at Skyline College. And I'm working towards my associate's transfer degree to graduate in Spring Twenty Twenty Two. I'm personally concerned about the class cancellations as I've already planned my schedule and workload for my final semesters at Skyline. Working with my counselors and the counselors at the schools that I plan to transfer to, and any deviation from that plan would completely change my plan of action. If my classes were to be canceled, it would completely impact my plans for graduation and supporting my family. I also currently work as a supplemental instruction leader for two courses at Skyline. And so I plan my whole schedule around the classes that I work for and being able to make the right hours to help support my family with rent and other bills. And so I personally don't have a means of transportation and being able to do my full school workload and working as a SI leader. So it's most efficient for me to be able to work from home. And so if there were to be any changes in that, I would completely. My family is depending on me, and so is my education, and so that would completely change. So that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Nicholas Maron.
Michael, how are we doing with the speaker?
Mr. President, I did promote him. And I'm not seeing him in the list.
Nicholas is in the room.
Where is he?
Nicholas, can you unmute, please? Nicholas?
Nicholas, unmute, please. Going once. Going twice. Well. There seems to be a problem here. So why didn't we take our next speaker, Vice Chancellor?
Mr. President, you have no further speakers at this time?
All right, we'll come back one more time. Nicholas, can you hear us? We have the floor. If you can unmute, we'd love to hear from you.
Oh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. Go right ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Oh, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Go right ahead.
Okay, so hello, my name is Nicholas Maron. I am twenty-three years old, and I live in San Mateo, California. Currently, this is my fifth semester attending College of San Mateo. My home campus is CSM. However, I would rather define myself as a student of the San Mateo Community College District. Because I'm taking multiple general education classes at CSM, Skyline, and Canada. My major is aviation, also known as a commercial airline pilot. And my goal is to transfer to California Aeronautical University located in Bakersfield, California, next year. While I will be completing my six certificates so that I can earn a bachelor's degree in aeronautical science. I'm part of the DRC program at CSM, Skyline, and Canada, and I'm also part of the trio at Skyline College. If classes were to get canceled in the next couple of weeks, this would impact me educationally in regards to my academic goal in which I'm currently pursuing. For instances, ever since I was a child, traveling to Japan every summer with my mother, I was always fascinated by how planes worked. And how pilots regularly navigated such advanced machinery. In elementary school, I was fascinated by the science behind aviation that inspired me when I got older. I used to work at the airport and see planes up close to me. These childhood fascinations have inspired my life goal to pilot around the world and fly planes. After graduating high school, my goal was to attend a community college, take as many general education requirements as much as possible.
Nicholas, you got muted.
Yeah, you can hear me, right?
Yes, continue.
Okay, okay. However, with the classes, with the class, however, with the class cancellation, this would mean a delay in transferring a movie out from San Mateo, California to Bakersfield. More time, more time to be stuck at a community college and taking classes. The effect of my student educational plan and scheduling a council appointment in order to switch my classes, which would be a struggle for students and counselors. Last but not least, this would also affect my financial terms. My, this would also affect me financially in terms of the expensive tuition costs at the San Mateo Community College District. My family's financial barriers and concerns are still hindering my ability to solely focus all my time and energy on my education. For instance, going going up as a single child, I have faced many obstacles and challenges such as being isolated in my room as a child translated to my adult life. As I still find it difficult to socialize with people my own age, especially during this time with the online learning that I'm going through. I was also severely bullied by my friends due to my learning disability. As a student of the San Mateo Community College District who has been diagnosed with a learning disability since high school and is also part of the Disability Resource Center for CSM, Skyline, and Canada, I struggle with a lot of timed tests and quizzes. I've also experienced many barriers and hardships that students with disabilities face when it comes to pursuing a higher education. Even when it comes to applying for scholarships, I have noticed that my GPA and/or full-time status has a sole determination for meridian financial assistance, which I believe is not fair as being a Hispanic Latino with a learning disability who is just trying his best and giving it, giving it his all by majoring in aviation, which is already bringing its own challenges. And so that's why, as a student of the San Mateo Community College District, I'm asking the board members if ever to stop canceling classes immediately because even though students, faculty, and staff don't have the ability and the power to make these decisions, students like me and other students who are here today to voice our opinions, will, you guys will affect our learning outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Mr. President, your next speaker is Christina Brower.
Hello, everybody. That was the first time I've ever been through that. So thank you, everybody. I wanted to just talk in regards to also class cancellation. And I'm here today because I would like to offer my experience with course cancellations. I've been an employee here for twenty-two years, first as a lead teacher at the Child Development Center, and now as a Program Services Coordinator and part-time faculty for the Education and Child Development Department. I'm also an alumni, have one daughter that's an alumni and another in program now. So as I found out that the, that there's a possibility of having course cancellations very soon, in the next week or so, I guess, I wanted to speak about the students' experience from what I see as a Program Services Coordinator, but what I also see from our department. Within early childhood department, we are always trying to find new faculty that are diverse in their areas and have lots of experience and can teach the students. Yet, these faculty are the first also that will be bumped if we need to start canceling courses. And so this, this kind of creates some issues and they've gone through their quodль and everything. And so it kind of, it affects the whole department and that can become very problematic. It can also affect the Child Development Lab Center, SAP centers because we rely heavily on student workers and they must be enrolled in a certain amount of units. In my experience there, I've had students that are taking courses that they don't need just because, because courses have been canceled and they wanted to stay and work in the program. So this is unfortunate just because they need the units. So at this time in our program, we are offering only one of most of our courses within our program. And so this highly affects our students that are on a trajectory of either getting their certificate, their degree, or also the state certification. There's also a shortage in our community of early childhood and early care workers. And many students are working in programs with the understanding with their employer that they will get these units in order to continue on because they need to be included in their ratio and also helps them to bump up their pay, which is very necessary in our community. So while I understand that the student first approach is the reason for early course cancellation as it allows time to rearrange schedules, I don't think that students are aware that they need to enroll in courses at a certain time. I mean, my experience as a PSC, as I, um, thank you, Melissa, Dr. Moreno, for that. In my experience as a PSC, I advise students and they often are unaware that there are any times that they need to enroll in courses or, you know, maybe have their classes canceled. I've had the experience and most of our students don't really start until August. I've been even asking my daughter and her friends, have you registered for classes there? Oh, not yet, not yet. You know, they've been sheltering in place for a while. And so I think that they are just trying to kind of forget about everything for this brief summer and are waiting to start enrolling maybe in August. And so I'd like you all to take that into consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You have no additional speakers this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone that has spoken to.
President Nurse, unmute.
Okay, press our buttons here. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. And so we are now moving forward in the agenda to new business. The first item is 210701A, Approval of Personnel Items, Change in Assignments, etc.